So, Planning Commission to order for January 4th. And I'll start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Van Hooewell?
Here.
Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
President?
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Chabaz? Absent. Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Ramon Hernandez?
Here.
This part of the, I'll call for public comments. If anybody in that audience would like to speak to, stress this commission on any item, they may do so, and you have three minutes. And see, and then we'll move on to the approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have motion to approve the agenda in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes and review with the possible approval of the minutes for December 5th, first. And I'd like to make a little note on that. For those of you that have, had noticed that the absent person on that ballot, on that, that thing that we were all handed last, we, or few days ago, it has been corrected. So if you see no other corrections, I would like a motion on that, please.
Mr. Chair?
Hmm?
I move to approve the minutes of December 5th, the study session.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And we'll review the possible approval of the minutes for December 7th of Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair? I move to approve them as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes for December 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I have an announcement of a committee report, please.
Chairman Peters, Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, under the category of announcements, there will be no Planning Commission meeting on January 18th. We'll be canceling for long.
Lack of items.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
Any information?
No information items.
Great, thank you. Well, all that, we're moving on to the public hearing item, please. And it'll be PC 17-0054, and it's a consideration of two applicants for a site of 0.878 acre in size, located at 1-855 North McCarran.
Good evening, Planning, Chairman Peterson and Planning Commissioner. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you tonight is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning for a property at, as you stated, at 1855 North McCarran. You can see on the vicinity map, it's this property outlined in red. Here's McCarran Boulevard. This would be Greenbray down here and York Way to the north. The project is, as I stated, two requests. The first request is a comprehensive plan amendment. The existing property is designated intermediate density residential, which has a density of six to less than 10 dwelling units per acre. This is the map here. You can see the property is IDR. To the north is, is commercial and LLR, large lot residential. The applicant is requesting to change the land use to commercial. And you can see it's consistent with the commercial designations to the north. The second request before you today is a rezoning of the property. The existing or current zoning on this property is SF9, which is single-family residential. You can see here, the property is SF9. To the north is SS15 and PO also. To the south is SF6. They are requesting to change the land use. Oops, I went the wrong way, I'm sorry. I can never get that roller thing right. The, they are requesting to change the designation, or the zoning, to professional office, which would restrict the uses to office-type uses. And reviewing the comprehensive plan findings, CP1 is a conformance with the regional plan and land use intensity designation. The property is located, and I think I'll go back to the vicinity, the property is located within the city of Sparks, TMSA area, and is located within an older part of Sparks, which has direct access from North McCarran Boulevard, right here. Their access is here, which complies with goals 1.1 and 1.2 of the regional plan. The property is currently served by utilities, including city sanitary sewer. However, it is on an existing well. And as long as the well is operable and pumping, they can keep that operating as their water source. Finding CP2 is that the comprehensive plan amendment implements the goals in the comprehensive plan. Approval of the CP, the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning request would support goals MG1 and MG2, because this would be adding lands as a non-residential land use. The comprehensive plan incorporates professional office land use as a, in the commercial district, land use district. We do not have a separate land use district for professional office. The proposed zoning is professional office, which would restrict the land uses to office types. Finding CP3, which is compatibility with the surrounding land uses, the subject property is located on the west side of North McCarran Boulevard. To the north, along McCarran, the properties are designated commercial to allow office uses. The single-family to the east is separated by North McCarran Boulevard, which has an estimated in 2016, average daily trips of 18,000. To the south are existing single-family homes, with their backyards having a common property line with the subject property. The conversion of the house to an office will require an administrative review, which is an in-house application review by staff. At that time, we will look and address buffering issues to the neighbors to the south. The finding CP4, which is public notice requirements, the notice was public in the Reno Gazette Journal on December 21st, 2017. On December 18th, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting. Three people attended and expressed no specific concerns at that meeting. Addressing the zoning, rezoning findings, finding Z1, consistent with the Sparks comprehensive plan, this rezoning request is consistent, which I discussed under finding CP2. If the comprehensive plan amendment is not approved tonight by the Planning Commission, then the rezoning request should not be recommended for approval to City Council. Finding Z2, which is consistent with the surrounding land uses, again, the rezoning request, I discussed the surrounding land uses under the finding CP3, so I'm not gonna go back through that tonight. The zone change request is consistent with the professional office zoning to the north of the subject property. The traffic volumes on North McCarran does not make the existing property ideal location for a single-family, and the office use will serve as a transitional use between the existing single-family to the west and McCarran Boulevard. Finding Z3, again, public notice. We sent out no, neighborhood notices of a distance of 750 feet around this property. It was a total of 203 notices that were mailed to the neighbors. Also, it was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on December 21st, 2017. This concludes my presentation tonight, and I'm available for, answer any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three quick ones, Karen. When we, we updated the comprehensive plan in 2016, did staff take a look at this property and consider it for inclusion as commercial land use? It seemed to me that the properties to the north have kind of had a commercial or office professional land use in the past. Did we, did staff look at this property during our update?
When we did the land use map, we did look at different areas, but generally what we did when we designated the properties, we did a straight conversion from the old land use designation to one of the new. As you may remember, some of you weren't on the Planning Commission, but our old land use map had nearly 80 different land uses. And so when we converted down to 20, we had to do a lot of conversion. And you can see in the comprehensive plan, we have listed what they convert for the zoning. But to answer your question, we did not generally change designations on property. We just transferred them to a consistent land use designation under the new mapping.
Thank you. My second question is, is in the comprehensive plan that we did, we eliminated the, I think it was office professional land use, and we replaced it with commercial. Why did we get rid of the office professional land use as a standalone land use designation?
Well, generally, what, probably the main reason we did that was, we had found in some locations, the professional office restricted, it was actually called office professional, was OP instead of PO. But the office professional designation restricted some of the uses, and we ended up having to come in and do comprehensive or master plan amendments in that case. And so we thought we would broaden, and that's what we did by going from 80 down to 20 categories. Every category was broadened by what was allowed under those designations. Gives us a little more flexibility.
Thank you, appreciate that. My last question is, if the proposed land use change was approved, in the future, what would be the process if a future property owner or the existing property owner would request for, let's say, more intense land, or zoning of like C2 or C1?
That would have to go through public hearing, again, just like we're doing with the professional office. It would have to be a public hearing before Planning Commission, and then also a public hearing at City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, staff.
Anyone else have any questions of staff? Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. My name is John Campotic. I'm with KLS Planning. I'm representing this gentleman on my left, who is Wes Grants from the CEO of ARC Health and Wellness. You know, I went to the workshop the other day. We've had a very pleasant process with staff, not a lot of issues. We did, I sent the meeting, the notice out to the 203 property owners. Three showed up. That's an all-time low in my career. It's staggering to me, but it's a good thing. And, so I really have nothing else to add. I have my own PowerPoint. If you wanted to get into more photos, I have some of those, but we're very pleased with the process and working with staff, and leave it at that, and be here for any questions you might have.
Commissioners, have any questions? I have. See, none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, and so I'll open this to the public hearing. Anyone out in the audience would like to speak on this matter, welcome to come forward to this commission. See, none, I'll close the public hearing.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Kristy Love. I live directly behind them. And I didn't understand anything you said. So, I, I guess I'm asking, were you asking them if they could take more property around? Is that what he was asking? If they wanted to end up buying more property, right? Or whatever, or where were you putting it?
You can't direct a question directly to the AM.
Oh.
But you address this board, and we'll do our best that we can do it. However, if you don't understand him, we didn't understand him either. So that would be a question that perhaps staff could better answer for you than any of these commissioners up here.
Oh, okay.
As to what that is. Other than that, why, I don't know. We'll call staff back and let her answer your questions on that.
Okay. And the other one, I guess all the meetings they had and that were in the newspaper, I didn't show up because I was probably at work, but I don't, so I don't know what's, what went on with those. Do you guys have notes or something from that, from that? Did you get them?
We were, you were noticed. Did you get a notice?
This is the only notice I received, is the one for tonight, as far as the Reno.
Where do you live, directly behind them?
Yes.
Ma'am, I'm sure you got a notice.
No, sir. This is the only notice I received, was the one I have that my mother's holding. That's the only notice I have received. That's why I'm here. I have spoken to them before this all came about, so I'm just curious what's.
Again, we'll, when you're finished, I will ask staff to comment on that, because they're the ones that get the notices out, and they're quite efficient at it. I have to back them on that. I don't know what happened in your case.
Yeah, sir, I didn't get one. Or, like I said, I would have been here, and I would have. I missed, in fact, I left work early today, because I worked 12 hours, so I left early to work today to make it this one. The other thing was, there's that natural ordage that runs through the back of my home that I have, that's set up. At my home, there's concrete that it flows through, and I was wondering what's going on with that, because when they first, when they first looked over, they were tearing everything down, and they covered the whole ordage up. Well, if that fills up, the people below me, and me, are gonna get flooded.
But this project does not include any, other than any remodel to extent, that extent that it's gonna bother your property back there. We're strictly here to change this, this application for a, a, a different.
Well, I understand you're trying to make it into a business or whatnot, but either way, whether it's gonna stay the same or go into a business, they would still have to do something about that, correct? Because I don't want to get flooded, and the people below us don't want to get flooded.
I don't think they're gonna make any kind of that alteration. That's my opinion. But Amondo will answer this.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, sir, because it was there before.
We would like to, all I want to do is stick to the subject matter.
Okay.
That's all I want.
Well, I, I'm just.
And you're done in a few minutes, but you, would you like to hold for a minute while Amondo answers your question?
That's a question that I can speak to you afterwards, and we can connect you with the engineering staff at the city of Sparks, and maybe we can get some answers to your questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name's Wanda, and I live in the area. When you look at the site map here in red, it looks like it's right on McCarran Boulevard, just like that.
Please, for a moment, may I correct you?
Pardon me?
I didn't do this. I need, after you threw speaking, I need a speaker card filled out from you, and I'll need a speaker card from you. And please, when you start addressing, will you start with your name and address, please?
Start with my name?
Yeah, your name and address.
Wanda Cocaine, 900 Mongolo Drive.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, you've got the Laquetti Home, that's been there for years, and you've got the other house next to it, and then that one corner is like a rehab, and like for physical therapy, and I think Dracula trility or something like that, and then you've got another empty lot. Is this house the one that sits way down at the end of a long driveway? Way at the back of the driveway? Yeah, and then there's a couple more houses next door to it. Because what I'm saying, looking at this map, if, if you don't know where it's at, I've been in Sparks for 64 years, it looks like it's right there on McCarran, and, you know, you've got Baskin Robbins and the pizza parlor down the street, but this is a house sitting way at the end of a long driveway that used to have a private pond, I believe. I don't know if it's been filled in, because this house just sold like last December, somebody new bought it. People have been living there for years, but I can't imagine going down the end of that long driveway and making that a business off of McCarran Boulevard. You know, you've got John Esquaga's old house across the street from it. I just think it's odd to start commercializing those single-family homes in that small area of McCarran Boulevard. And plus, you've got Boise Court right behind him, that, you know, has a whole bunch of little houses back in there, and I don't think those people were counting on a business being over their back fence. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Be sure and fill out a request of speaker card. Anyone else? See, none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion and a possible motion, please.
Can I request the applicant come back up? You said you had some information regarding the public hearing that you had.
So it was a.
Photos and some.
Yeah, I can't claim it as a public hearing, because it was hosted by us, right? NRS 278-210 requires a community meeting hosted by the petitioner, in this case, Mr. Grants from ARC Health and Wellness. So he hired me to put that on. We found a conspicuous location, welcome to the public, try and always host it near the school, near the proposed location, either in an elementary school or a church, and in this case, two schools were not available, so we did it 1.2 miles down the road at the church at Greenbray and 4th Street. And we noticed 203 households. The list is generated by staff. That's important for credibility in the process. 203 households. I don't know what to say, other than I'm certain, because these went out, and we didn't get any returns from these, from these two ladies that spoke, as in failed delivery or anything like, what do you call it? But I heard from only one person, and it was by phone call across the street on Fairly, Fairly Driver, Fairly Avenue. That was the, the extent of that process. And then, of course, we explained what we were doing, and then we did a PowerPoint presentation, and as Ms. Melby said, three people showed up.
Can you summarize some of the things that you talked about in your PowerPoint presentations?
Basically duplicate to what, oh, sure, sorry to cut you off. Ms. Melby mentioned, you know, talked about the nature of the request, the master plan amendment, and the zone change. The zone change with the intent to do a professional office, which would be the headquarters for ARC Health and Wellness with about seven employees. The, the structure will remain as it is today. He was planning on doing a little storage area in the back, apparently has a building permit to do so. So this will be very much the way you see it today, and I think it's important for the public to know, and I think staff touched on it as well in the staff report, that the orientation of activity is to McCarran Boulevard, not going to the west and to the south. So I think that's kind of a safe bet for the public to be, know that it's gonna be simply a driveway turn-in and turn-out. We're into McCarran, and a couple of employees there, in regular, normal business hours, doing what they do.
In addition, McCarran, and dot.
Karen is and dot right away.
And so you'll have, for your egress and regress, you'll have to negotiate with the and dot.
Has to be done to their satisfaction, that's right.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question, Ms. Reed?
Oh, I just want to make sure you answered the questions that the people were.
Yeah.
Came up and asked, so I want to make sure that they.
I hope, I hope I did, you know. We were very diligent in that process. I know it's important, and I take it seriously when representing a master plan change, so.
Mr. Chair, can I call Karen back up, please?
Yeah. Thank you.
To reiterate, I think one of the public did ask about, when you do rezone to, in this case, PO, on the rezoning, I think one of the questions was, there later on can't be a gas station put there, or something with the PO designation. So could you talk about, a little bit about the PO designation, or what can go in there?
The professional office zoning designation only allows professional office and, like real estates, dental, medical offices. It also, I believe, if I remember, it also allows childcare, I think, but I'm not positive. But it's mostly office uses that are allowed in the professional office zoning district.
And if another use that was coming that would dramatically change that, like industrial or mechanical, they would have to re, come back through the public hearing process, correct?
Yes. And industrial would not be appropriate for this area, just as a sidebar. We wouldn't support industrial in this area.
Anything further from the commissioners?
The other, as a comment to address the public's question, the first lady speaking, we will be doing an administrative review to convert this building. They will have to come in for administrative review, and during that time, we would also look at any site drainage, access, any of the buffering issues to the neighbors. So, I didn't realize there was a drainage there, but I'm sure engineering will be looking at that.
Yeah, thank you for addressing that, because you had a concern on it.
That's part of the reason to do the administrative review, is to make sure that we address.
Have any idea how she got missed on notices?
No. They, they use this, they being John Campotic, when he mailed the notices out, it was the same list that we used. So.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I got to tell you, I'll be looking for a motion on this, but we got to, this is a two-part motion. So we'll take the first part, and we'll be on the comprehensive plan first.
Mr. Chair? I move to approve the request associated with PCN 17-0054 to amend the comprehensive plan land use designation from IDR to C, based on finding CP1 through CP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Have a motion, or you have a second?
Second.
On the question? Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make some comments for the record with respect to the proposed land change issue. I apologize to the public for my, my technical questioning with the, the land use, and I appreciated your joke, Mr. Chairman. But I would just like to say, you know, anytime that we're looking at changing our comprehensive land use plan from single-family residential to commercial, that's a very serious matter, and I think that this body, the city council and region, our friends in regional, you know, should take those kind of requests very seriously. With respect to this proposed change, I feel that the, I'm gonna support the, the zone change with, to professional office, but I think, I concur with staff's recommendation on the finding C point, or CP2. I believe that'll help meet goals MG1 and MG2 of our land use plan. But I do have some concerns with, with how our current comprehensive plan works, and having just primarily a single commercial land use designation that would also, it also, it also acts as our commercial, or as our office professional land use designation. I live next door to a, to a C2 area, and I'm a little concerned about the unintended consequences of this action. If this land use change goes through, under our existing comprehensive land use plan, a more intense zoning would potentially be allowed down the road after a public hearing. I'm a little concerned about that, and I would suggest that perhaps maybe this commission and staff take a look at possibly changing our comprehensive land use plan and bringing back office professional. But with that being said, I do believe that with the existing office professional or commercial land uses, that a PO use would be appropriate in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Carey, I hope you understand, your points are well taken, and I was only Josh. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. I will take the second part of this motion, and first I will open the public hearing for it again. And anyone wish to speak on the second part of this motion, on, on the zoning? It's free to come up for three minutes. See, none, I will bring that back to the commissioners for discussion. Close the public hearing, bring that back to the commissioners. And we will close this public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for a possible motion and discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Right.
I moved forward a recommendation.
I moved forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the rezoning associated with PCN 17-0054 from SF9 to PO based on the findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. On a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to general business item. Looking at PCN 16-0045, a request for the approval of the building elevations at the Legends.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. I'm Jonathan Cummins, assistant planner. This proposal associated with PCN 16-0045 is for review and possible approval of elevations for a new retail building of approximately 7,060 square feet in Zone C of the Legends at Sparks Marina and fulfillment of the requirements in the Legends handbook. The proposed site is 1.06 acres in size at the northeast corner of Shields Drive and Big Fish Drive, outlined in blue on the vicinity map. It's okay. Staff believes that these proposed elevations conform to the Legends handbook as well as the city's design standards manual by incorporating a variety of materials and colors while remaining consistent with surrounding architecture. Staff recommends approval of the architectural elevations associated with PCN 16-0045 by the Planning Commission, and will be happy to take questions.
Any questions?
Jonathan, how many other drive-throughs do we have proposed in Zone C?
One, I believe. I believe that the existing, or the...
The Chick-fil-A?
Chick-fil-A.
Okay, but, and then this one's a proposed drive-through as well, too?
The elevations indicate, indicate that it would be. Developer has reached out to us, saying that that's not certain, that when we do receive their permits for, their applications for the administrative review to get building permits, that there may not necessarily be a drive-through there, but they are...
Would one be allowed in this location, under the handbook? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. Then I'll bring it back here for the, to the commissioners for a possible discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
I move to approve the building elevations associated with PCN 16-0045 for a new retail building approximately 7,060 square feet in size, located in Zone C of the Legends Shopping Center.
Second.
The motion is second, on a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. We're looking for public comment again. Anybody?
You lost your audience.
Was it something I said?
Everybody's yeah.
Any other, seeing no public comments, any comments from the commissioners?
Just a quick one, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I just wanted to extend heartfelt congratulations to our mayor, Gino Martini, for being named the RGJ Citizen of the Year. I think, I'm not the only one on this commission when I say that he's more than deserving of this award, and I think it's great to have such a great Sparks leader be awarded, receive that award. So congrats, Mayor Martini, if you're watching.
Yes, that's it.
Here.
Second.
Anything further? Seeing no more comments from the commissioners, then I see no reason we chant. adjourned.